Nikki, how are you?
Oh, good. How are you?
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, Nikki.
Okay.
Wasn't completely.
Mary's not here today?
Yeah.
No, we're gonna excuse him.
The parcel numbers.
So, ahead.
Did you want to read my chicken scratch and you could get the addresses, or do you need that?
Nah.
No? Okay.
She is, um, Czechoslovakia. That's his cousin. She lives here in the village.
Oh, wow.
Oh, at like allergies.
Hmm. Oh. Oh, are you gonna start coughing on me?
Only to me.
Let the germs fly over. I don't think that'd work.
Hey, we can afford it.
We don't want anybody sick.
No. That's what said we had to IT. Down there, it wasn't that I could give anybody to anybody hurt, or, you know, it wasn't something like that.
I don't know.
Yeah, you didn't want us getting you something, yeah.
Yeah, that's just the way it was down there. And also.
Yeah, awful.
Well, they're not, no medication, but they're letting them come. The numbers are coming up still okay.
Good.
I hope.
Yeah. Eat lots of blueberries.
My blueberries are just about right.
Yeah, well, eat lots.
Yeah, I gotta cover them before the birds get them.
Right, yeah.
Baby's all right.
Oh, they're doing great.
They're healthy.
I have to tell them, but it's a little different with the new website.
Really?
Yeah, it takes a couple of years.
Mary had that one on her calendar. She did it.
Every year you'll get more and more.
She did it a different way.
Um, biggest, biggest thing is.
This one, you go to Village Council, and then you go to YouTube.
Yeah, it is different. I was, I was asking.
But she's gonna get that straightened out, but it's just one of those things. I'll just let everybody know that.
Yeah, there's a YouTube link.
But it's there.
Yeah.
We're there.
I have three.
Okay, you good?
They produce so much.
Okay. Fred, Diane, Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
John?
With bells on.
Nikki, okay, here we go. Hi, Leah. Okay. We're gonna start the committee of the whole meeting of the Village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 at 7:02 PM. Okay. Next item, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. A roll call, Nikki?
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Spitznagle.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Whedon from tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed to excuse Councilman Ray Whedon. Okay. Also present is our Law Director, John Montello, our Fiscal Officer, Nicole Sell, and our Fiscal Clerk, Melissa Sandrick. Okay. Any comments related to any, to the agenda items? From council? We're gonna go through them before we start. Any comments for those items to anybody that's here or any residents? Also, we're YouTubing it. And, um, we have a new website. And it's a little different. I, I think it's a nice website. I think everybody will be real happy, and our residents will be real happy once they get used to kinda, uh, uh, you know, going around it. And it's easier. But to get to this meeting, you'll, up on top, the toolbar area, the large, you'll see Village Council. Click on that. And once you click on that, you'll get all Village Council. Scroll down a little bit and you'll see YouTube. Uh, click on YouTube and you'll see this meeting. We're gonna try, I know the Safety Committee meeting that we had before this was actually where the calendar was. Uh, when Mary posted that, she posted a little different and she had a little hard time, but there's a learning curve there. But we're trying to get it in more places than where we have it, than where we had it before. Uh, but it is there right now, and I just wanna tell you, you would go to Village Council, scroll down, you'll see YouTube. It's highlighted. Click on that. The link opens up and you can watch a slide. So, that's where that's at right now. So, welcome to any residents or non-residents that are watching then. Okay, any comments related from residents? Nothing at this time. Okay, Nikki, if you wanna go through what you passed out to us earlier this week, or last week, I think it was?
So, I passed out basically the same things that I passed out last week, only updated through May 31st. Um, the first page is the cash summary by fund, which shows all of our revenue expenses um, and our beginning and ending fund balances. So, through May 31st, uh, all fund balances, our revenues exceeded expenses by $455,789. Um, the following pages. Um, we have the revenue status, which shows the, uh, budget, the revenue, and what we have received year-to-date, which is 44% of our budget, of our budgeted revenue. The next one is a line item detail as well of the expenditures year-to-date. Um, how much we have spent of our budget, which is about 55%. Um, I think. The final printout was the cash flow year-over-year, and it shows, um, the difference between this year and last year in both revenues and expenses.
It's really nice. I like that.
It's the one with the large font.
I know, they're all very small.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Nikki, do you plan, no, do you plan, do you foresee that our revenue will exceed our appropriations towards the end of the year, that that's gonna even out more, the 44 and the 55%?
I am hoping that that happens. Um, I can say there's a couple of good items, um, now that you brought that up, that I wanted to discuss. Um, the first one was a Rita retainer refund. And here, one second, I'll pull that out. So, Rita gave us a refund. We pay a 3% retainer to Rita. So, they sent out an email which said, "Due to unprecedented interest income, which is applied to reduced agent, agency costs of operations, the 2023 average net cost of collections was .89% versus 1.15 in the prior year for the administrative cost of collections, registration, auditing, compliance, records retention, et cetera, leaving the balance of collections for your fire, police, street repairs, recreational expenses, and other community expenditures." And the amount that they have refunded us for the year was So, that was nice, and I'm.
That was a.
That was unexpected.
Mr. Mayor?
It was a nice day when you told me about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, Nicole, can we get a copy of, of that for our records?
Sure.
Just, yeah, email it or whatever. Thank you.
Um, and the second item. Uh, I recently went, met with our bankers at Huntington because we had a, a nice balance in our account, about $4 million. And we have to keep a certain amount in to cover any kind of fees or whatever that the bank may charge. Um, discussing, uh, possible options for the additional funds because we only needed to maintain about $2 million in our account to cover all of those fees. We ended up deciding, well, I ended up deciding that Star Bank would be the way to go for us. So, I have put $2 million, $2 million into our Star account, which is now earning oh, uh, 5.45, I think was the last I saw, 5.45%. So, that should bring us additional revenues each month of upwards of $7,000 or $8,000.
Mm-hmm. Excellent.
So, hopefully.
Yay.
Our revenues will be up this year. Um, and those were basically the only two items that I really had to go over. I didn't know if anybody had any questions or comments on the reports. I don't know if you wanna see these every month, or if you would rather have something more condensed.
I think these are outstanding.
Yes.
Yes.
Every month would be great, Nikki.
Continue monthly.
Okay, so each finance meeting, then I can make copies of all these for you to review.
Thank you.
And I've been trying to get them to you at least by Friday, so that you have a few days ahead of time to review them.
Where would we find this Rita refund listed?
It won't be listed individually, but it would be, um, let's see if I have the accounts in front of me. It would be under other miscellaneous operating. So, I don't know that it's gonna show it. Because this is not every individual deposit that was made. It's gonna be the total of all the deposits for the year. So, I can get you a general ledger if that helps.
No, no, I just didn't know if Rita would be listed separate.
Nikki, I, I just, um, just for residents and are here and non-residents and, and residents that are watching or non-residents, you know, you, you think, oh, $2 million, and we're getting 5 and something percent, but maybe you can, and you can explain it a lot better to me. But as a municipality, we're very restricted where we can invest. So, a lot of people think, oh, my gosh, if I had $2 million, I should, certainly can get more than 5%, Mr. Mayor Colgraf, but, um, we have, we don't have those kinda options. We have to be in very restricted funds because it's public money, and we can't invest in high risk and risks, you know, risk that. So, I don't know, you can kinda explain it probably better to me.
No, that summarizes it perfectly. We do have to maintain investments that are not risky, um, to the village, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Nicole, I have a question. We, we're running on a very negative budget this year. So, at, as we keep going through the year, does that deplete what you put in Star Bank, or is that just depleting from Huntington? I mean, it's gonna cut one of these figures in half.
Well, Huntington is definitely gonna be, that's where our checking account is, so that's where all of our transactions will occur. Should we need more money in there, we will pull it from Star.
From Star.
And put it into Huntington.
Okay.
Yeah. So. That's where we are so far in the finance. As far as the bank reconciliation is concerned, I am meeting with, uh, UAN. I've met with him twice for about an hour. He's giving me some direction. Um, it's just finding time to dig into all that, but.
You don't wanna work 80 hours a week?
If maybe in the winter?
That's a good answer.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I would, I'll definitely say thank you, Nikki, for everything that you've done and what you've gotten through and what you're continuing to do with the UAN and stuff, too. I appreciate it. I'm sure all the rest of council appreciates it.
Well, thank you.
And our residents should appreciate it because you really have your thumb on the pulse.
Well, thank you.
And Melissa's helped her as well.
Yes, yes, Melissa.
And Melissa.
She has been a huge help, huge help.
She doesn't wanna sit up here, though.
I think she should sit up here tonight, just to get, just to get a feel for it.
We can just set her up by Brian.
Right?
Or else we could, you could sit between Brian and Ray.
That would definitely be the road between.
She wouldn't like that.
There was a comment from Lee Nielsen, and it said, Nicole, thank you for the good financial work you are doing. So, thank you, Lee.
Any other questions, uh, from residents, non-residents, anybody watching? Council? Should, I mean, we can come back to it. Should we keep moving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have item six, uh, and I'll let, uh, our Law Director, um, talk about this, and, or Nikki, whoever. Want me to refer to John, Nikki, or do you want to?
Yes.
Okay, which is item, uh, item six, public hearing on 2025 tax budget?
It pertains to Resolution Number 2024-23. It's just the annual, uh, document, or, or resolution that we have to pass and present to the county to make sure we're within our millage, and, uh, we wanna double-check to make sure that we're not exceeding it, or there's any changes in the millage, and once they approve this, then we can, uh, estimate our budget up. We could, we stay within, that's how we estimate how much money we're getting in, 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 uh, next year, and, uh, so we can prepare budgets. That's basically it in a nutshell.
So, if anybody has any questions on it?
It hasn't changed, I don't believe, correct, Mayor? I mean, we haven't changed the millage for quite some time. It's been the same.
No, we have, it's been the same.
But you still have to have an annual, you have to pass this annually just to, so the county can make sure that there's no changes or. And I guess it's just the way it's been forever, so. You wanna keep an eye on us.
Nikki, anything to add to that, or?
No.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Is that the one where, the hearing that, uh, we have to sign that we're in attendance? Do we have to sign that, or the people in attendance, or no?
No, that's something else with engineering.
Yeah.
Usually Joe's here with that.
Okay.
Yeah. No, just has to be on the agenda, correct, John?
Yes. Just, no one ever comments on it in any communities, really, but.
But you can.
You can, if you want to.
And we can come back to it, and, uh, we'll go through it. Council, good? Any questions from any residents, non-residents? Okay, we'll move on to the legislation. Talked about these items last week in the, in the first COW meeting of the month, this is the second one, so we have Ordinance 2024-5. That's the property assessments. I know we went through that, but I, I think at that time, council did want, uh, Appendix A, the attachment which council received, correct?
I did. I didn't get one. I was.
One of these?
Yeah, I didn't get that.
Oh, I didn't get it till last week?
No.
Okay, I was handing them out as everyone was leaving, so you must not have.
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
I'll get you a copy.
No, maybe tonight, or.
I'll make copies.
Throw it in my mail box.
Yeah, we're not voting on anything, because, yeah, you could take a look at it, and.
No, it's just.
Did you, Diane, you have one?
I have one, yes.
Okay.
Uh, these five parcels, this is just lawn mowing, right? That, okay.
And is that just one mowing, Nikki?
I'm not sure what this, I just get this total from, um, Jeff, so I'm not sure if it's just one, or if it would include multiple.
Yeah. Because, yeah, if they mowed like four times and that. I got six and a half acres.
That's only like, no, it's a front yard only, isn't it?
Do you have a question? Do you want us to, we can, we can talk to Jeff or Rob if you need that.
Yeah, no, I, Mayor, I was just curious.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
I'm just curious if we knew.
All right, no problem. Just wanted to see if there, you know, for this meeting, we need anything for next week.
Yeah, no.
Um, if we're gonna have a motion next week to recess for July and August, I'd ask that we could pass these on suspension. I know we've spent a little time with them last week and been, been looking at them. I know some of those things Nikki has been presenting to us throughout the year. Okay, any questions from any residents, non-residents? Anybody watching? Okay, we'll move on to Item B, Ordinance 2024-6, making additional appropriations and advance attachments. Nikki, I'll let you talk about that.
Uh, we had a few appropriations that we needed to increase. Um, I believe, did I go, may have gone through them last week?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Um, the, uh, advance for the J&amp;J Sewer Project, um, that's an advance to our capital fund to pay for this, which we are expected to receive the full amount back from Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Um, the dispatch new hire insurance payments, we estimated to the end of the year, we had two new dispatch, um, that are now taking insurance, as well as one in the Recreation Department. Um, the Mayor's Court Supplies was, uh, a purchase that was, uh, not really expected in the budget. Someone purchased some folders for the Mayor's Court. Um, so, we needed, it was the $3,000 we needed to increase the budget.
They're gonna use them. No, it was a, a, uh.
No, I believe it, just a lot.
Yeah.
And the last one was for the Garfield Heights, um, Municipal Court, and that was for the filing fees. And so that we just needed to increase those appropriations prior to the end of the year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to take you, on that Garfield Municipal Court, did they, they raised their rates?
They did raise their rates. Um, I believe it was from 15 to $20, and then they did a reconciliation of last year, and their expenses were more than they had anticip, anticipated and charged each municipality. So, I, I forget what the amount is. I don't have it in front of me, but they charged us for that this year. So, I needed to increase the budget this year for both of those items.
I just wanted you to.
I think it was $35,000.
Yeah, I just wanted you to kinda repeat that from last week, uh, just so people are aware that $85,000, that's a big number.
Right.
For that to just jump up and be out there, so.
Right.
But it also includes, Nikki, right, the cameras, processing, small claims court, things like that, all of those fees, yeah.
So, it's $20 per ticket, or per court appearance, or. I mean, does that get put back into their fee? If, if my speeding ticket was $100, now I pay 120, so it can get reimbursed back through?
That I'm not sure of. Are you?
No, it comes out of the $100.
Still just comes out of that fee?
Yes, so it does reduce our income a little bit as a result.
And we haven't increased our, um, what a, what a few communities have done to offset that, uh, that service, the Garfield Court services, they've raised their fees, uh, to help. So, that's something we have talked about.
Okay.
You know, but we'll have to, uh, put that together, because we, we wanna, uh, make it reasonable, too.
Safety is the prime concern.
Yes, safety's the prime concern. It's not, remember, we're still making.
Well, they're not all speeding tickets. These are other, they're everything that comes through Garfield Court.
Correct.
Right.
I'm assuming you're, you're dealing with.
The courts are a service.
So, we shouldn't take any kind of a loss, I mean.
We're not, we're not taking a loss.
Not at all.
We're just making less.
The $20 is only on the camera.
I mean, it's two ways to look at it, but it's not.
Mayor, if, if a police officer issues a speeding ticket and they wanna contest it, does that go also to Garfield, or does that come here?
I'll let John answer that.
Um, they can come in here and, uh, argue, you know, argue, but, you know, state their case, and, you know, we try to resolve it at this level because if we resolve it at this level, it, it goes to our Mayor's Court, and we get to keep more money. But, but if they really wanna trial and, and wanna dispute it, they have to plead not guilty. We don't conduct trials here in the Mayor's Court. Or not, not, hardly any Mayor's Courts conduct trials, but so they, it's shipped over to the Municipal Court if they really wanna contest it.
Okay, thank you.
But we still receive money from, from the ticket, just not the court costs, because the court costs are then paid to the Municipal Court rather than us. So, that's the difference. If we keep it here, we keep the court costs and the fine money. If it goes to the, uh, Garfield Court, if it's under the local code, we get to keep the fine money, but the court costs are, are used to pay the budget of the Garfield Municipal Court. And, uh, and if it's under state code, the state gets the money, but, but so you, we have to be very careful about, would, would you have somebody plead to you? You monitor whether it's under state or local, or you amend it to, you know, if you know somebody's not gonna go to jail, and it's, it's really just a monetary issue rather than a, uh, a punishment issue, then you usually put it under the local code, but, uh, but if you know someone's going to jail, you might wanna put it under state code because then the county or the state pays the cost of jail. So, it's, it's a little more, you know, it's kinda complicated, but it's not really, but you just have to pay attention. And Marty does a great job doing that, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions from residents or non-residents, or anybody watching the live stream? Okay, we'll move on to Item C, Resolution 2024-23, tax levies. I'll, we'll refer this one to Melissa?
Yes.
Look at that.
Uh, that's just certifying our, our, uh, levies to the, um, county. That's a, something we do every year.
Now, we would also ask for suspension because these items have to be done in September, correct? The first, first week of September.
Yeah, I said like September 9th, yeah.
I know we did discuss that last week. Any other questions related to that resolution?
Oh, no, the property assessment's worth by September. I'm sorry, this is by July 1st. July, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to have a special meeting?
Yeah.
Which we probably will, maybe for some other things, but. Everybody good with Item C? Any questions from the residents, non-residents, live stream? Residents that are watching the live stream? We good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll move on to Item D, Resolution 2024-24, tax advance. Nikki, I'll refer to you on that.
So, that's also another item that we do every year, and it basically requests advances from the county auditor, um, on the taxes. So, there'll be two tax advances in Jan, one in January, one in February, and then they, in March, they'll kinda shore it up for what they've received so, so far and give us the remainder. And that happens again once in July, where they give us an advance, and then go back again, and August, we receive the final amount of our taxes for the year.
Any questions on that resolution? Is council good with that? Okay. We have a motion on there today, Item 8. Before I ask for somebody to make that motion, Nikki, you wanna explain why that's there?
Um, Rita, just typically you have a delegate and an alternate to attend meetings and any kind of informational sessions. They have a yearly meeting and kind of update everyone and what's going on with Rita. So, um, I had seen something come through for the yearly meeting coming up, and I called, and we don't have a delegate. But, uh, Mr. Spitznagle, Councilman Spitznagle was the alternate, so.
I guess somebody have volunteered me.
So, that is the motion. I would, um, I'd like to be appointed as the delegate to attend the meetings and so forth as, as a delegate for the village. Okay.
All right, well, Mr. Mayor?
Go, go ahead.
Can we make the motion now?
You can make the motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nicole Sell as our Regional Income Tax Agency Delegate.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Councilwoman Allen, seconded by Councilman Spitznagle. Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. 5-0.
Congratulations for the extra duties.
Actually.
More to do.
More to do!
Actually gets you out of here, though, right?
And I actually like going to the trainings and all the meetings and updates, it's kind of like...
That's good.
I like it.
As I say, we could always make the motion to have, we could do it next time, Melissa.
Just go be the alternate?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's no big deal.
Okay. All right. Any other business?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
I had a resident contact me, they were asking about our meeting minutes. We haven't had them in a long time here. But, and when can we expect those? I mean, I think we should send them back to the transcriber that was doing it, instead of having Nicole sit and try to do them.
Yeah.
And are we gonna be able to post those online then, too, for residents to see?
Yeah. It, it's funny, because me and Nikki, we just had that conversation the other day. Nikki has a lot, quite a few complete from last year.
Not quite a few, but I do have some complete from last year, and I can maybe see if Melissa or, or someone can review them, and we can get them to you. I'm not sure exactly how many, but I know I was working on them for quite a, quite a while last year.
But we did talk about getting them trans, but go ahead.
Yeah, and I did do a couple from this year, um, it just kind of fell by the wayside with all the, with other things coming ahead of that, so...
Well, Mr. Mayor, if, I do think it's well worth it just to have it transcribed, Nikki doesn't need more on her plate, especially you're our new delegate.
Yeah, no, there's, there's not a, um...
So, and from what I remember, it wasn't a huge expense when those were done, correct?
I, I'm not sure what the expense was, I don't think it was a real expensive.
Yeah, I didn't think so either.
But we, you still have, you, you have to do a little bit, but, but we'll, we can get that, we just talked about that. And it's, we have all of it, especially since we livestream everything, too, you know, and then we record it, we record every meeting, um, and dispatch, too, so... But yeah, okay, we, we're on the same page, we had that conversation, so, and then, of course, we do want to get them, we, we do want to get it posted on, on the new, um, website. Uh, I know, uh, it's a learning curve, so everybody be patient with us. There's some things that have been happening the last couple of weeks that they, they fixed, they didn't get on there, there's some things, but we're working through it, and it, it looks nice, and they've been very good with, uh, according to Mary, and I, I don't know, Melissa or Nicole, if you guys talked to them, you've had some things, uh, they've been responsive. So, we'll get, we'll get to, I think, where the Information Committee expects it to be in council, so...
I will say, it was very easy when I got the email from Mary, that it was up.
Oh, good.
And I went right to it, right away and stuff, and it's, really, it was really easy to go to council, and it let you, from the site, email directly to a council member.
See that, yeah, see, that's nice.
Yeah, so, because I sent myself a note to see if it would come through, or... But it did.
He could have sent me a note.
Yes.
It did.
Yesterday, we were doing the agendas, but we, and that is a little, there's a learning curve there, we have to get through. It published it, but what happened, it didn't...
It didn't automatically upload it to the website, it doesn't do that yet, so Mary had to...
Okay.
Somehow print it and put it on there.
So, there's some things, but we expected that, you know, it's, it's...
Yeah. Mayor?
Yes.
While we're on that subject, I was gonna wait to other business, but while we're on that subject of the website that you brought up, if any resident is going through the site and sees something that could be improved, or could be titled differently, or any suggestions whatsoever, feel free to please email me, and we'll, we'll work on all that stuff. Uh, it's definitely a work in progress, and a, as the mayor said, uh, we've got a bunch of information on there, but we've got a bunch of information to put on there also, that we have in our archives, that were on the other, other website. So, please feel free to email me, uh, with any suggestions on the website.
We did talk, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Um, when I was on Information Committee last year, we did talk about getting photos of the employees up...
I was thinking about that, yep.
And stuff, you know, so our residents would know exactly who it is they're, you know, dealing with, or could expect if it's someone from Service Department, you know, it would be an easy way for a resident to verify.
Put a face with a name.
Mayor, do we have a, is, does the village have a, a digital camera? Because I, yeah, I...
Well, everybody's phone.
I actually thought about that, was thinking about that, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if, if anywhere, we might have one in the service, I'd have to ask Rob.
Yeah, because I don't know how, how, I would be glad to take the pictures, but I didn't feel comfortable walking into Nicole's office and saying, "Here, let me take a picture of you with my camera, with my phone, and I promise I'm gonna post it on the website," you know? I'd, I'd rather have, you know...
Sure.
You know, unless somebody, unless everybody in advance knew about it, you know?
Right, yeah.
Well, you want a nice picture, I mean, not that you can't, I mean, we, everybody wants a nice picture.
Sure, yeah, it would give them some notice.
A web page, and...
Yeah.
You know, so that our Service Department guys weren't leafing up to their elbows and coming for a picture.
Right. Any other business, old or new business? So, let's just go, kind of go through the agenda. Yeah. Yeah, you do, and you gotta use the mic, Leah, just, just so you, everybody can hear. Nah, it's not silly. There you go.
What do I do? Leah Louthen, I live on Logan Drive.
That's all you have to do.
I just have a question, I know the street is supposed to be, Logan Drive is supposed to be resurfaced this year, and I was just run, wondering if you guys know when, just because I'm gonna have a big party for my mother's 90th birthday, and I want to know if it's gonna interfere with that, that's all. Is that wrong to ask?
No, because what, to be honest with you, um, we're gonna review that, as of right now, it's not scheduled.
Okay, August 10th, try to get that done.
No, it, I can tell you that right now, um, I had another resident...
Because you're all are invited.
Ask, ask me about, um, Ryan Estates, uh, you know, uh, those are other ones we're reviewing. Right now, the only ones that are in the budget, the only one that's in the budget is Phase Three, correct? Council, and, and Nikki. We were, we had a staff meeting today, and, uh, residents probably don't know this, but we didn't put anything, but just a few items in capital, which was, um, Phase Three, and one of the reasons, because we did receive a grant there. We did apply for a grant in Ryan Estates, but didn't receive it.
So, is it possible it might not happen, as you said?
Might not even happen.
Okay, well, just make sure it doesn't happen that way.
No, I, I think, I think you're gonna be okay, but I, I just didn't want to just say that and leave that open-ended, because I did have a resident ask me about, uh, where they live, too, off of Dunham there. And we talked today about, you know, and council, too, we're gonna, we, trying to talk more and more, besides the finance meeting, we're putting, uh, the finances in the committee of the whole meeting minutes, uh, too, and, and that agenda, but we're gonna look at everything in September again, um, to see where we're at, get a good feel, just like this eighty-five thousand from Rita, and, you know, some of the things with some of the development, and see where we're at. Those were part of the, how those came about, those were part of the road program, they were scheduled for this year. So, we might just have to push the road program back. But I would say there's a good chance, if they don't happen this year, they're gonna happen next year, just because, uh, they're a little bit smaller than what we're doing over here with Alexander Road.
We are just a little.
So... But those are tough, because those are the, you know, the roads affect, um, our residents, you know, and it's... And they're the hardest, they're the hardest ones to, um, fund, they, they just really are.
Well, because, yeah, I understand, because there's not a lot of traffic, and, you know...
Yeah, and, and we really thought we, we had a good chance of getting that grant for, uh, Ryan Estates, but we didn't, so... We're gonna keep trying, despite, so... I would say I wouldn't worry about your party, but I, I'll say this, when, when, what happens is, when you do have a party, anybody, any resident that has a party, we do ask, they call the Police Department.
I always do, and I invite them, too, for a snack if they like to come.
But anybody watching, that way they're aware, and if a neighbor does call and say, hey, there's a bunch of cars...
Right.
They know why, and it...
Well, that's, that was my problem, in case, you know, the street was gonna be taken care of.
Right.
I would have to make some kind of arrangements, because it's just a, you know, dead end, so, yeah, that would be rough, so... Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from any residents?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jen.
Um, just talking about the budget, it's my understanding that that small window for the police cars is only gonna be open through June 24th?
Yeah, um, but we, we talked, um, in our staff meeting today, and I, I think I might have shared this with you, the dealerships, if you give a letter of intent, um, they're okay with that. But Nikki's gonna review the leasing, um, with that, and it echoes either way, whether you lease or whether we purchase, if they have a letter of intent, they'll, you know, let you move forward with that, we did talk about that with the chiefs this afternoon, so... But there is, as you know, all the departments had some, have some capital. The cars, if anything, right now, out of those, out of our departments, vehicles are probably, uh, the biggest need right now. The Police Department, and then what affects the Police Department affects Recreation, because if we do buy a, a police vehicle or lease or two, then we would move those vehicles into the Recreation Community Life Department. And right now, they're in need of some vehicles, too. And that service, the police, i- is, uh, the most important, because we have to provide safety and security to our residents and our community, but, uh, the Recreation and, and Community Life cars are important, too, because we do provide a lot of transportation for our residents, and they rely on that. And it, not for, for those type of needs, but for everyday, doctor's appointments, uh, maybe shopping for groceries, so, um, we'll be talking about that.
Well, just, I just wanted to remind residents, I guess, if you will, that if our police vehicles have over a hundred thousand miles on them, and they're in an accident, the insurance company has the option to not cover it. Um, and you might not think that a hundred thousand miles on a car is a lot, but it's actually hours on that engine that really puts the wear and tear, because, you know, they're sitting, traffic, you know, going by and stuff, and that vehicle is continually running, so...
Okay. Any other questions related to anything, that's on the agenda, or not on the agenda, or any old business, new business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Diane.
Uh, last week, you had talked about the, making sure all contractors in the village were registered, and then following the permit procedures. Was there something in the ordinance that we will be working on to change and adjust, or no?
No, Rob, um, is reviewing it, along with, um, he's gonna probably send it out to George Smaraggin, have a look at that. Who you have met, you guys have met George, we use George as our, um... Zoni expert and, and stuff, so...
Diane hasn't met George.
Oh, okay. He, uh, he does a lot of code enforcement, rights, um, ordinances, uh, for a lot of communities in Carter County and outside of Carter County. So, he can look at that, he'll look at our ordinance and, uh, have a good idea, and look at, Rob, does it need to be updated? Is it pretty consistent with what's out there?
I did like that, what you have in the journal, I've never seen that before, having permits enlisted and how many...
Yeah, we've done, we've...
That were done.
Yeah, we've done, um...
Will you be able to continue that?
Yeah, we've done it before, but, um, we, me and Rob have talked, and he's gonna probably do something more consistent every month, something very similar to that, you know, if there's something, yeah. We've had it like sporadic here and there, um, but he's talked about putting something in there, um, like that. The big thing, too, and I'm, thank you, Diane, for bringing that up, is just so everybody knows, um, and I know everybody here probably knows, but, uh, anybody listening, if you need to go to the Building Department, it is in the, uh, our Community Room, right across from our municipal building here, and, uh, they made a nice area there, it, uh, serves the Building Department. We feel better, especially with the development we got going on in the village, gives a place for a contractor to go, look at the plans, doesn't interfere with our court system, um, gives Lisa, the Building Assistant, kind of a space, where she can concentrate on that, um, so it, it's really working out well, uh, with that, so that was part of it, too. But yeah, we did talk about that, Diane, putting, have Rob putting something in almost every month with kind of an update on permits, um, code enforcement, and stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That, if you guys haven't seen the new Building Department over there, please stop, it is beautiful, and it was all done in-house.
Yeah, it looks really nice.
All of the work that they did, so it, it really is really nice looking, and kudos to those guys for making the desks and everything there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Lee Nielsen said, "Please consider electric vehicle for non-police cars."
There are green grants out there. For things like that.
The problem is, we don't meet, usually we don't meet, uh, I've looked into those, and now, not that we couldn't get one, but the ones that I've looked into, either demographically we don't meet because of income levels, or, uh, we're, uh, you know, there's a lot, if, if this were a Native American community, uh, we could have had one already, probably, but, because there seems to be a lot of Native American grants or grant, you know, uh, serving municipalities and areas that are underdeveloped and things like that, um, that's the problem I've run into with, with federal grants.
That's what I saw with the, um, grants for Internet.
Yes.
It's more of a depressed area.
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, can I ask for a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, Committee of the Whole, meeting adjourned at 7:47 PM. Okay. Don't go off that link, remember, we only got the one link.
Well, we have to start the special council meeting and stuff.
Yeah, right, you know what I'm saying, but that, remember, Nikki, we only put one link on there.
Yeah, it wouldn't make sense to have a second one.
No. Okay. We're, everybody ready to start the special council meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Like to welcome everybody to the special council meeting, Village of Walton Hills, of Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 7:48 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Okay, uh, just want to let everybody know, um, before I ask for this motion, uh, if, uh, council agrees to go in an executive session, we'll go into an executive session, we'll come out, we'll reconvene, and then we will adjourn the meeting. We won't be voting on anything or any discussion, correct, council, if you see that word? So, um, we are going to end the live stream, um, at that time when we go in, uh, because otherwise it will just keep running, or we might keep it running and just see us excuse it, I'll see what they want to do, um...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to excuse, make a motion to excuse Mr. Councilman Whedon from tonight's special council meeting.
Second.
Second? Vote on, uh, the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Spitznagle?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending or imminent court action to discuss economic development regarding the Forward Innovation Center East, permanent parcel number 794-38-04, to discuss collective bargaining with the police department, to discuss personnel matters regarding dispatchers and the recreation department pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nielsen. Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kanzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay.
Instead of ending the stream, you can, you can, uh, what's the other option?
Pause it. There's like a pause or?
Yeah, you could pause it.
I thought we'd stay in here. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, well, you may want to just end the.
Stop streaming.
He's a felon.
Excellent connection. Let me see if this is, you want to check it just in case?
But mine was, was going to do the same thing. When I went in there, it was doing the same thing, so. Did it start?
Well, let me do, let me try this. And I'll go back to this.
Anybody going to go see the Rolling Stones or what?
Where are they?
Down at Cleveland Stadium.
Really?
Yeah.
This Saturday?
I'm sure it's sold out.
Yeah, I've seen it come down.
They're going to roll them right out.
Yeah, we're live, we're on, I think.
Let me go check.
Yep, we're on. They should be on. Uh, refresh it, refresh it. That's what I had to do to that other one. Is my magic trick?
Don't show us that.
Yeah, look at, look at Diane. She goes, what are you doing?
You see what it's like with them?
To pass the time.
It's working? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconvene from executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, vote on the motion. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Kanzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, meeting reconvened at 9:25. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the, uh, special council meeting.
Second.
Second. Vote on the motion. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Kanzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Don't look at me.
Brian Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned at 9:26. Okay, 9:25. Thank you, everybody.